Special meeting, call for order at the 26.
Twenty-six.
First order of business is flags.
Of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice of our all.
We're here for a special meeting. Anybody wish to do anything to change agenda? Hearing nothing, move the agenda. Move the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consent calendar, I don't think we have anything today. Oh, waiver of the full reading.
We need to do, we need to do vocal.
Waiver of the reading.
Attendance.
Oh, that's one attendance. I missed, sorry.
Councilmember Aaron Kearns?
Here.
Councilmember Warren?
Here.
Councilmember Zites?
Present.
Mayor Bo Tem Hagerty?
Here.
Mayor Brown?
Here.
Approval of the agenda, we got motion to second. I guess it was still in order to do that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on, consent calendar, we do have the...
We have public comment in front of consent calendar.
Not doing well.
That's okay.
This morning said it.
And so, yeah, public comments. Do you have any, anybody wanting to speak? Anybody want to say anything before we begin?
If I don't like to say anything.
Okay. Anybody wants to say anything? Okay. Moving on, consent calendar, waiver of reading, full ordinances by title, what? Well, it's, I don't know. All in favor of consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five, five, nothing. Okay, business item marijuana. Marijuana. Mr. City Manager, the city attorney is getting rated 12 percent.
So, what we have in front of you is, I believe, what you requested last time. Let's go back to the, this item on the agenda. The agenda item says pertaining to non-medical marijuana cultivation. So, the first thing I need to explain is the distinction between personal use and cultivation, and commercial use and cultivation. You do not have in front of you an ordinance that would take any action on commercial cultivation, commercial dispensaries, or commercial mobile. You only have a personal use and cultivation ordinance, and a review of Proposition 64 from the point of view of a city, not necessarily from pro or con the proposition. So, and I, that doesn't mean that there will, you may not need to take public comments on commercial use because that'll be the next issue, but it's not in front of you today. And I don't know that it'll be in front of you on November 2nd, I can't tell. So, what you have is a discussion of personal use and cultivation, and here's why. If Proposition 64 passes, the general belief is that it will, it goes into effect on November 9th, at which point, personal use of marijuana for recreational purposes becomes legal. Put aside everything about medical marijuana, your medical marijuana ordinance stays in place, except to the extent required by law. You've banned personal use such as with a medical card, and as you can grow plants for those uses. You've banned dispensaries, you've banned mobile delivery, and you've banned cultivation in the city. That stays in place. This would be a new set of ordinances and a new state law. State law provides, down here, okay. Okay, so your ordinance number 168, which was in fact codified in your zoning code, remains in place. The initiative that you probably have read about legalizes non-medical recreational use of marijuana by people 21 years and older, and includes personal cultivation of six mature plants indoors. Okay, it's just, it's called AUMA, however you want to say that, I call it Prop 64 because it sounds weird otherwise. Right? So, this is what it, it does, it's pretty much the same as Colorado in this regard. And it tells you how much marijuana you can possess, as well as how much you can grow for personal use. There are prohibitions on smoking marijuana in the same places that your smoking ordinance applies, within certain distances of schools, daycare, youth centers, while driving or riding, and in a public place. You, as a city, can also prohibit smoking and possession in the building's own in order to maintain a drug-free workplace, which is a requirement of some of your grants. And I've included that in your urgency ordinance. Let's talk about the regulation, and why we're talking about this, before Proposition 64 passes, is known to have passed or not. Personal indoor cultivation of six mature plants is guaranteed, cannot be banned, as long as it's indoors, but it can be regulated. So, the question number one is, do you want to regulate it? Regulation would include granting a permit, potential inspections, fire code issues, distance issues, requirements that a greenhouse not be accessible to the public, that sort of thing. For commercial cultivation, there will be state licenses required. It's not anticipated that those will be issued for about a year, although it's possible they could be issued sooner. It requires the cooperation of three departments, Consumer Affairs, Food and Agriculture, and the Department of Public Health. It's also possible licenses will happen sooner rather than later. So, the next issue you'll have, not today, will be commercial marijuana regulation or banning, in the same way you considered it for medical marijuana. So, if you, in the future, if you choose to ban it, the people will not be able to get a state license, pretty much the same as person now for medical marijuana. There's a couple of hooks in that for cultivation, but we can talk about those in the future. You're responsible for enforcing your local ordinances, the state is responsible for enforcing the state regulations, although you could be licensed or permitted by the state to do so if you go through a specific process. One of the things that you need to understand is that there is a tax imposed by Proposition 64 that will be collected by the state. The state has indicated that, that, well, Proposition provides that 20 percent of the funds collected from the tax could go to local agencies at the discretion of the legislature. Most people suspect the legislature probably won't pay that, maybe not even once. But if you ban cultivation at any level, you are not eligible to receive that tax. You are, however, allowed to impose your own tax if you follow the requirements of Proposition 218. The tax is not in front of you today, except for the fact that banning personal cultivation could preclude your receipt of funds under this excise tax. So...
You're talking about cultivation for...
Personal use, personal use. Any cultivation ban will bounce you from getting tax revenue.
Okay, but we wouldn't have, we wouldn't need to ban, but we can add ordinances for control inspection and that sort of thing.
You can regulate, you can't ban personal indoor cultivation. You can ban personal outdoor cultivation, which will preclude you from receiving funding, as I understand it now. I should've, should've put out the caveat. This is all based on what people believe, they believe, and other planning groups believe is going to happen. As with many things, I assume there will be litigation, there'll be opinions, there'll be all kinds of things that happen, which could change what I am telling you now. So, step, question one is, do you want to regulate personal indoor growth? And we'll take a look at what personal indoor regulation means. Do you want to ban personal outdoor cultivation? Or, third question, do you want to consider regulating personal outdoor cultivation, which is not dissimilar to the indoor provisions? And I brought a sample, if you wanted to talk about that, but it's not included in the draft I've given you.
Are we ready to...
Let me see what else we've got in here. Okay, so we'll go back, because we can talk about that later. So, I think the question you need to talk about is, what do you want to do about personal cultivation, both indoor and outdoor? I haven't, I've included a provision in this ordinance that does ban it in city facilities, vehicles, et cetera, because of the requirements of your drug-free workplace grant, of grants for a drug-free workplace. Having said all that, none of this changes federal law, which still makes it illegal. Any cultivation ban lasts only until such time as the Attorney General in California can certify that it is, it would be illegal to continue the ban, which means the federal government changed their mind. So, and let me talk a little about the form of ordinance. A form of ordinance you have is an urgency zoning ordinance. These are zoning, explicit zoning ordinances, chapter nine of your code. You can adopt this urgency ordinance without notice and without hearing today, or on November 2nd. If you're going to do it, you need to do it before the proposition passes, has the potential for passing. It, I mean, this ordinance is good for 45 days. It is renewed for 10 months and 15 days if you decide to go there. And each time you renew it, you have to report on the progress of moving toward a permanent ordinance. The interim ordinance process can last up to two years. I'm not suggesting it should, I'm just explaining why you can take action on what is a zoning ordinance without notice and hearing, which is outside the normal process.
And that's, that lasts for 45 days, and it has to be renewed...
It has to be renewed. It has to be renewed almost immediately with a noticed hearing, it's a zoning ordinance. And then after 10 months and 45 days, it can be renewed again for an additional year.
And then that continues each year?
For two, up to two years.
And at the end of two years?
At the end of two years, it either expires, and you go back to no ordinance, or you have put in place a permanent ordinance on your own.
Okay, so this is strictly applies to the urgency...
And it strictly applies to personal cultivation.
There's a time to see what the law...
The thinking behind this is that if you don't take action before the law passes, and this ordinance is of no effect, obviously, if the law fails, you will have people who are, have a non-conforming zoning use. And the non-conforming zoning use will continue. You really can't tell them to stop because they, they did it legally in the interim between when the law passed and when you might have passed an ordinance. So, that's why a number of places are considering these. Now, not all places that have considered this have decided to take action, but you need to talk about it and decide how you want to proceed. I mean, it's my job to give you the issue, it's your job to decide.
What's the difference between passing an urgency ordinance now, which would, we would have to move ultimately to a permanent ordinance? And it looks me like the advantage to that would be to see how everything shapes out if the law passes, and what's determined by who, and all that, versus are just passing ordinance, period, not ever.
Difference is with process, the content is the same.
As I see it, the reason we need the urgency ordinance is to get something in place before, and if we had to go through the whole hearing process, we wouldn't have it in place before the law.
But it's particularly true that I think an urgency ordinance is, or interim ordinance is appropriate here, because no one really knows what's going to happen if Prop 64 passes, by some chance it doesn't pass. No one knows whether it will turn out to be a good thing, a bad thing, or what will happen with the regulation.
John has to leave real quickly, so I'm hoping to at least, if no one objects, let him ask whatever questions he has, so that we can, so he can leave what he needs to.
Well, I guess what gets me, what, I guess the city attorney was asking is first, that we decide whether we want to go to one, two, three, or four, and I would go to two and three, but three seems to be a moot point.
I have not.
Three seems to be a moot point at this point, and so I would recommend that we go to number two, regulate.
I don't think number three's a moot point. Number three simply carries with it the inability at present to collect on the tax that is going to be collected by the state.
But we don't have an ordinance before us that says you cannot cultivate.
Yes, you do. You have an ordinance before you that does two and three.
I'm sorry.
You don't have an ordinance before you that does four.
Yeah. We can't ban indoor cultivation, so let's, I would want to stick with number two. And I guess I just have, if I can, just go to a couple of quick questions. You had said permit, but if I, if we go to page, either number five on what you handed out today, or the ordinance, or 51, we talk about the authorized grower there, and we go to page seven, it asks being a residence, and all of this stuff. But what gets me is then on page eight, E, says indoor cultivation of marijuana restricted to authorized growers. And then it gets into, into that authorized grower, which is anybody who wants to have six plants, basically.
An authorized grower under your ordinance is an adult, 21 years or older, who comes and gets a permit from the city, and you can only have one authorized grower per resident. If you have four adults in house, you can't have four authorized growers.
But it doesn't say that on page five.
I need to look at the ordinance.
What is the law, what does it state?
Well, we're writing the ordinance, and the ordinance says authorized grower means a person 21 years or older who's authorized and compliant.
Right. And we, we have later, wait a minute, we have a later form of ordinance, which I believe is, okay, so go back to 160?
168.
Okay, go back to ordinance 168, which is in the back of your binder.
Where was it?
Okay, so if you take a look at authorized grower.
That's what I did on page, just, page five or page 51, depending on which one's looking at. Bottom of page five, and the documents you guys want.
Okay, I think you need to look at the top of page six. It says one authorized grower per resident, who presents written evidence that that person is the one for that personal residence.
Where was that, on page six?
It's at the top, above number two. Second, second, first full sentence that begins with "there may be..."
Okay, I don't have that.
I know. Go to very back there.
Well, I...
I could do without it. I think I might have memorized it.
I've got a new one, and so, that wasn't on the document.
No, because the agenda had to go out early before I changed it. Sorry.
That's why I didn't see it, so.
Good position.
I know, just to see the read.
So, so I've gone through and adjusted the definition of authorized grower.
Yeah, well, that's not the point I wanted to get to. It's really on page eight.
Eight of 168?
Yes, page 54, I assume that it's correct. E, number two. Says no person shall grow marijuana upon any parcel until and unless he or she first secures a permit from the building department. Now, it says we can regulate. Now, what this permit is, and I see nothing for in here about a permit, other than that one sentence, right there, that there's going to be a permit.
Right.
And what that permit constitutes, and, or anything else, the only other thing that I have with, with all of this, is a penalty for sales.
Well, it seems that...
They're not supposed to be able to sell.
Okay, I, no, they can't sell it. The state law says you can't sell it. I believe that what it says is that the reg, the, the regulations for issuance of the permit will be set forth by resolution of the city council. It will support both the process and the fee.
Then number two doesn't delineate whether it's indoor or outdoor or controlled.
It says indoor under number E, indoor cultivation restricted to authorized growers.
Right, right.
No, I'm talking about number two under E, it just says you can't grow it upon any parcel.
It's the heading.
The heading does it. I'm perfectly happy to change it to say no authorized grower can grow indoors upon any parcel.
But an authorized grower, by definition, should be in compliance with the law.
It's also true that no person could grow it.
With regards to ordinance 168, please refer to the handout that was given to you shortly instead of the one in your binder. That's the most up today.
Thank you. Before John escapes, so I want to throw a monkey wrench in here and get your feedback. I would think, based on the current law that we have, for health reasons, we would have the ability to regulate indoor growth to the extent that affects public health, which would be, for instance, if people had, were consuming, smoking marijuana inside with children, and my big concern on all of this is with children. So, my question would be, is there anything we can do to, for instance, I would prefer, the world were mine, if you're going to grow marijuana, you have it in a room that's locked away from children, so they can't get their hands on it. And, and even if we had to go so far, and I don't like the idea of adults smoking marijuana around children, so, and I know we can, we could, for instance, for safety or for health reasons, even go so far as to ban smoking in a house, so those cities have done that. So, yeah, other cities have done it for tobacco.
You won't be able to ban the smoking of marijuana, because if Proposition 64 passes, state law allows the smoking, except in places that then accepted, so.
And it just not restricted to...
Could you consider a room not accessible to children? Yes.
Okay, but could you, people that, for instance, have laws against smoking cigarettes in houses, now they can smoke marijuana in the house, but they can't smoke a cigarette in the house?
The law says that where smoking is banned, smoking marijuana will be banned. If you have a restriction citywide on smoking in people's personal residences, I don't, I have to be honest, I don't know whether it's going to apply, or whether it's going to be considered preemptive. If you read the literal language, it might be that you banned it by banning smoking. I don't think that was the intent of the law. So, I don't know the answer, whether it's to whether you think you're better about.
I'd just like to throw out, I, I don't like the idea of adults smoking marijuana around kids. And I don't know what else you have to do to prevent that. I would be willing to give up smoking in houses if it prevented smoking marijuana around kids, personally. But more importantly, I don't want to see access, those children having access to those marijuana plants. And so, I would like to see a, an ord, you know, something in the ordinance that actually says you're going to grow it, you're going to grow it in a room that's got a locked door or something, so that kids can't get to it. If you've got children in the house, you either don't grow it, or you grow it behind a locked door.
And the problem?
The problem with use inside your house, you have all these freedoms that you're supposed to have, personal freedoms. I talked to the head of pediatrics for the main hospital in Portland, and they had an increase of about, I think it was 30, 40 percent, I forget, of children, underage children coming in with overdoses through ingesting edibles. So, if they don't smoke it, but they make candy, or they make fudge, or they make whatever they make, that this is often accessible to children who don't know the difference. And they've had some very major problems with children with this sort of thing in ordinance, so.
Let me just clarify one thing. I see my concerns are now on a new document that was there. When, we would then see if it passes, if it passes, then we would do another resolution that takes care of all the permitting.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
And we could get into that point for, for Tim's sake, of a lot of, in L, on that safe page, is that we kept in a locked space, that we would then define under resolution...
I would probably add that to the ordinance.
Put that in the ordinance, and that's, all those things would be clarified at some point in time. If it's against a law to use it, not to, against a law to use it, and really can't sell it, but I can see that that's going to be, be happening, and, and the fines for marijuana possession at this point are, tend to be relatively minor, that, so somebody starts selling it, and they make a bunch of money, and then they get caught and get slapped in the wrist with 47, nothing's going to happen anyway. It just, just seems to me that this is a, a good way for somebody to have six plants at least, in, in various homes to, to sell. And I don't know, I, I don't know that you have the answers to that, but it's just one of the things that, that really gets me, that, that the penalty for doing that...
Is less than the profit?
Oh, yeah, but virtually no penalty whatsoever. And I could go out and rent, rent six homes, I could go out and rent six homes, and then have six plants in each one of those homes.
Under current law?
Under this.
No, you cannot. You can have one in the city.
One.
You could be an authorized grower for one residence in the city.
Focusing back on my issues of, of smoking marijuana in buildings where children are present. You know, even though it's probably not enforceable from our standpoint, you know, a CPS guy walking in there and, whoa, you know, I don't know, under the current situation, whether he has any say in this. You know, that kid could be walking around in a marijuana cloud, and unless there's some, you know, some way of dealing with, dealing with children and marijuana, I don't know if even CPS would have the ability to deal with it.
I guess my response to you would be viewed from, I, I think if you get to that point, there are other laws that apply. You might want to view this in the same way as restricting alcohol or prescription drugs for children.
Well, that's what I'm hoping, is that, how do we, how do we keep kids away from walking into a, you know, a room full of marijuana, you know? And I was just saying, you know, I, it's significant enough for me, I can see banning smoking, you know, if it bans, if it bans marijuana rooms, you know? I don't want to see kids having to live in a house full of marijuana. I, I don't know what your answer is, but I was hoping that we could somehow deal with that.
You certainly can, you certainly can, as to personal indoor cultivation, requiring the plants be, now, we're not talking about smoking, we're talking about cultivation, and you're not talking about, plants be kept away from children.
Right.
But you're going to have to apply on the provisions of, and remember, we're only talking about personal use, no, we're not talking about the commercial side.
Right.
You're, you're going to have to rely on the provisions of state law at a variety of levels to regulate personal use as to health impacts on other people and children.
But don't we have, don't we have some right to regulate? I mean, if you can regulate smoking in a building, why can't you regulate marijuana smoking?
Aren't there child endangerment laws now?
Yes.
How are they enforced?
Generally by Child Protective Services, I guess.
If, if, it doesn't cover smoking, so it certainly doesn't cover marijuana.
The proposition provides that where smoking is banned, and I think it means probably in commercial or public buildings, the smoking of marijuana is banned. First of all, you don't have a ban on personal smoking in one's residence. And I'm not sure that even if you did, that it would cover this, or if it would be considered preemptive. I don't know the answer.
Okay, let me beg to, to argue with you just for a second before I leave, because I hadn't seen this until today, and what you're talking about. And if I read this to you... And if I read this to you, what you had said, that it could only be one residence within the city, that on page six of the new one that you passed out today, and it says, "There may be only one authorized grower per private residence who can present written evidence that any and all other persons twenty-one years old..." That just says to me that if I'm living with somebody else, that the two of us can't be an authorized grower and we have twelve plants. It doesn't say that I can't have twelve different residences to do that. I own the only authorized grower in that residence, I'm the only authorized grower in that residence, and I'm the only authorized grower in that residence. But...
It doesn't say, it doesn't delineate the proper dealer if a...
That's it, it's only one, one in the segment.
You need to look at page seven, under the regulations, where it says, "The authorized grower shall not participate in marijuana cultivation in any other location within the city." Remembering that that reference is to personal cultivation, not commercial. There may be only one authorized grower per private residence. And that's number seven under D on page seven.
All right, got that, okay. Should we have that?
And all these rules are a joke because you don't have the resources to... We can pass all the ordinances and restrictions in the world, we don't have the resources to do this, so.
Well, I think in terms of restricting, you know, restricting cultivation, we've got, you know, somebody complains, they see a bunch of marijuana plants growing in somebody's backyard, and we've got enforcement.
Yeah, but I'm talking about restrictions on indoor smoking or...
Well, again, my child endangerment thoughts are that if I've got a marijuana plant growing in the house, and it's just sitting there, you know, people can grab a butt, walk out the door, some kid. You know, if at least it's restricted to be behind closed doors, you know, the kid grabs a marijuana butt, walks into school, somebody says, "Where'd you get it?" He says, "Well, I got it at home." Well, at least if we've got something that says it has to be behind lock and key, away from children, you know, Child Protective Services can come in and say, can do some enforcement action there.
What laws are not, I guess, the speeding laws don't catch every speeder in California. They're there if they catch a speeder, they catch every other things. That would be the same with this. We don't, we won't ever have the resources. Nobody ever has the resources to enforce every law on the books.
The main reason to do this is, number one, if you want to do the outdoor personal cultivation ban, that is consistent with what you have now to certainly stand under a verse up. Number two, the reason you put these regulations in place are for the case that stands out. It's for the case that becomes public nuisance. So that you have criteria which to judge whether or not this is a nuisance. And yes, you could probably do it under your public nuisance law without adopting anything, but it would make it harder because you didn't have benchmarks.
Oh, this could be also...
But Don's right, enforcing these is extremely difficult and expensive.
Right, and that's what our job is, and that's what we're doing, that's what we're doing.
Could we add to that as far as keeping plants?
Yeah.
Also put products, processed of the plants to prevent the ingestion of cupcakes and candy and...
I don't, no, hang on just a second. You don't have, let me make this very clear. This ordinance is not necessarily for adoption today. Everybody who sees these has a lot of questions. It can be placed on your November second agenda in exactly the same way, and you can, by then you can abstract and ask as many questions as possible. We had hoped to get this, the revisions are not that great, they're really tweaks to make it more specific. Because of the agenda process, we weren't able to get it when it went out with the agenda. But the bulk of it is the same, it's still the same basic policy decisions, which you don't have to make today. You still have the second in which you could do it, with etirateriary meeting.
I'm going to leave, but let me, let me make a quick statement, and then you can add.
I'll be fine.
I agree with one sixty-eight as I received today with the changes.
But you should read the whole thing.
Well, I'll go over what is different. I tried to read the whole thing as well, but the, I agree with Tim on that. And I think my only concern will be in the permitting process or resolution. When we get down into, you know, the devil's in the details, and that's what the details are. And whether we could do something to protect the kids by resolution in the locked room and the locked process and all that kind of stuff, then I think that that would be good. And so I look forward, I think I would approve this, but I would want to be concerned about the resolution and the permitting process and everything that we're going through with that.
Which may be after your, it may be after your time, but, but...
But what I'm saying is I don't have a problem with this.
Right, right, and I, I agree, I know that we are either going to pass the interim today or we can do it, but it has to be before.
Whether you pass it in this form or revised form, or you don't pass it, the point is you need, I mean, you need to discuss and decide how you want to proceed in and then forward.
Right, but I'm just trying to assure you and Tim that that's, whatever happens going forward, if it's while you're still here or while you're not, I will champion that cause.
Just want to say, I'm good for this if you are going to vote for it today. I'm good, I'm good on it November the second. But I look forward to the resolution being the significant factor in this, not this one.
Right.
Mayor, did you want to help out and comment?
I thought, since this was only, uh, does somebody want to comment?
I think they might.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He has a jacket on, all the times I meet people, I want to help me to comment.
Yeah, you got all dressed up.
That's okay, thank you. Good afternoon, California staff. My name is Randall Longland, I'm an attorney. And I also run a consulting firm for the cannabis industry. As I sit here and I listen and I understand what's happening with Proposition 64, what I would ask you to consider, and to look at it, at least to think about, maybe have a workshop on. It may sound odd to even say this at this juncture or at this point, but is to consider the commercialization, allowing commercialized marijuana in your city. And let me explain why and what I mean by that. I think it's the safer route. I understand 64 is going to allow personal growth of up to six plants. I don't like that, right? I understand that's going to be the law, but I don't think that's the safest way in which to understand that cannabis is coming into your town or your, or your city. If you consider commercial cultivation and/or commercial dispensing of cannabis, that will curtail, at least to some extent, this personal cultivation of cannabis. Now, when we're talking about six plants inside of a residence and people don't have an outlet to obtain cannabis, whether it's medical or whether it's for recreational purposes, and we're talking about six plants inside of a house, boy, these plants could become trees, right? When we're talking about plants, we could be talking about, I don't know if you've seen a cannabis plant when it's starting to really grow and produce, we're talking about monster plants, and colloquially, they are called trees. Six of those could fill a house. When we talk about regulated, commercial cannabis, what we're talking about is cultivation that is in a regulated environment, unlike inside of your residence. I mean, and you can try and regulate that to the best of your ability, but when we're talking about commercial cultivation, we're talking about state regulation. We're talking about having that cannabis, having that medicine tested as well, right? That cannabis inside your house doesn't have to be tested. They can be using all sorts of different pesticides on that. I would encourage you to think about that. I have all sorts of, and I would love to be a resource there, I can get any of you, any of the information on it that you might need. I've worked with multiple cities throughout California. I've drafted multiple ordinances, multiple initiatives, and helped cities draft multiple ordinances and/or initiatives themselves. So I think that could be a great resource. And I'm not, I'm not asking you to, to do anything other than to look at something that you have in front of you right now. That is an issue, and Mayor, I absolutely understand. My opinion, and I don't mean to step on the city attorney's toes, I think you can do it. I think you can ban smoking within the house, cigarettes, and I think that would also cover this, irrespective of what 64 says with regard to the certain places. And I think it should be. I think that when we talk about the edibles, right, we talk about things that look like candies, and snickers bars and gummy bears, this is the place to start looking at that and starting to say, hey, look, guys, if this is coming to our state and coming to our city, I want to be somebody to talk about. If it has to come, okay, but why are we not talking more about that? Why are we not talking more about how Colorado has certain problems? And one of the big problems in Colorado is edibles that look like candies, right? We should be looking more at that. But part of that is having a discussion and not being fearful of the discussion and saying, look, guys, we need to at least consider that. And ultimately, after the consideration, maybe you say no, but I think it definitely should be a consideration. And one of those two options will be the most appropriate and safe option within your city. Something's coming here, right? And I think you ought to look at what is in ultimately the best interest for this city. And all I'm saying is I would love to be a resource, I would love to give any information that I could in that regard, and then you all can make that decision. But I do think it's something that should at least be on the table, considered, perhaps at a workshop, and to say, hey, this is something that may or may not, and I think the police department should be involved, I think everybody should be involved to say, if we're going to regulate this, what is the best way in which we can regulate it for our city? And that's, those are my thoughts.
So, what exactly is your point? You said you're the attorney for the cannabis market or commercial use.
Correct.
So what are you suggesting that, you're suggesting that we approve commercial use versus indoor use?
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm not suggesting necessarily that you approve commercial use, but I'm suggesting that you consider and that you look at that as an alternative to have some kind of a way in which for individuals who choose to use it either for medicine, or assuming Prop 64 passes recreationally, to have some kind of an outlet, an additional resource to obtain medicine or recreational product outside of and aside from growing this in their house where children might be present. And when I look at prohibition back in the day of alcohol, and we talked about individuals who had stills at their house, right? Those are the types of things, I don't think that's the safest way in which to have that, right? It's much safer to have it bottled and produced in a, in a, in a commercial tested facility and sold through a regulated environment. And if that happens, now what we're talking about, when we're talking about children's access to this, now we're talking about products that come from a legalized dispensing facility that are now stored in a particular place, kind of like alcohol, as opposed to plants throughout a house. I, I don't believe that that's the best way in which to have it. I don't believe that that's the safest way in which to have it. You may ultimately, through the possibility of regulating where those plants and how accessible those plants are, but I think the alternative ought to at least be explored.
But if 64 passes, then yours is in addition to, not an alternative.
Well, it is, it is, it is an alternative, and it doesn't mean that you now can't still grow those plants in your house, but it does mean that you have an alternative access to that product or medicine instead of having to grow it in your house. That's, that's really what I'm saying.
Jordan?
Yes, I have a question. Perhaps I'm a little naive, but could you explain to me the dangers of growing six plants in your house? I don't understand that...
Well, yeah, absolutely, and what I'm, what I'm talking about, when I talk about dangers, what I'm talking about is some of the things I think have already been expressed at council, right? One of them is, let's just oppose the two, right? Let's assume you're not growing in home, but you're obtaining some type of product from a legalized dispensing facility. Now, that product is going to be much smaller because there are limits as to what you can actually purchase. Now, when you take that home, that should be now locked up, stored, very similar to alcohol, in a, in a safe place. Now, that's alternative one. Alternative two now is instead of having those processed products come in at a, at a, at a regulated quantity, now we're talking about having up to six plants. And again, we all understand what happens if these people start to push limits on here. And when we're talking about plants, I want to make sure, but we're, you know, we could be talking about anything from a pot of little plant in your house, right, a foot tall, to something that looks more like these, that are trees inside there. So when we're talking about some type of fear, if you will, I think we are talking about, you know, more access or possible access to going around those plants by children, junior high students, and grabbing a couple of those, putting them in a pocket and walking around. The, the fact that the plants are in the house and that odor is wafting through, I'm not a smoker. That odor to me wafts through and it's an odd, odd odor. I don't know that that's necessarily something that, just because one parent can do it, that you want necessarily a whack around your, your children wafting through. So I think it's just, I think it's the accessibility aspect of it, number one. Number two, when we're growing a specific plant, we don't necessarily know what we're growing, not everybody, not that everybody's going to have the greenest of thumbs, okay? And when you go into a regulated environment and you're purchasing a product, you're purchasing a product that's been tested, not only been tested for mold and mildew and bacteria and contaminants, but also THC levels, CBD levels, actually levels of what exactly are you now getting that is coming in, going to be ingested into your body?
Excuse me, then, where does somebody behind these plants start with initially? Who regulates that?
Well, under this, it will be regulated by the state right now. Cities that are allowing it, and for example, Adelanto is, is allowing it up in the high desert, they're regulating it themselves. The problem today under medical laws is we're starting right now to get a bureau together, very similar to the A B C that regulates alcohol, but that won't be in place until the end of two thousand seventeen.
So you're advocating, I don't understand, is a safe environment opposed to...
A safe environment.
To bootleggers in their house and to...
And I think that's the best analogy that I can, that I can put forth before, before council, which is if we look at that, I mean, there is a difference with regard to bootlegging, right? We're talking about still and the possibility of...
Well, maybe it's the wrong choice of words.
But I mean, I think it is, but I think it is applicable. I mean, I think that when we're talking about accessibility, even a still irrespective of the ability to combust, you know, we're talking about access, access. We don't necessarily want a garage full of alcohol that has been produced in a still, whereas, and we're talking about large quantities in still as opposed to someone who goes and gets a six-pack at the store and puts it in, you know, the refrigerator or an alcohol bottle.
So these dispensaries are in operation now? I mean, I know they are in other states.
Well, they're in California right now, absolutely.
But they're medical.
But they're medical.
Oh.
But they are medical. So there are two different aspects when we talk about taxation. When we talk about medical taxation, we're talking about city municipal tax. When we're talking about regulated, non-medical or recreational, now we're talking about the ability to tax it at a municipal level as well as the possibility of that, you know, what? Right now, the, the, the thought is that we're looking at about a billion dollars in California in taxation. A billion, it's a lot of money. And even in the possibility of twenty percent of that coming back in addition to the municipal taxes, it's something definitely to consider.
Okay, I have a couple of comments. I, ten percent are a while back on all this, and four of the five people who spoke were proponents of 64, so I got a whole lot of... I heard all your arguments about the regulation. I totally agree, regulating is absolutely the best way to go. The problem is that when you start regulating, all of the requirements for making sure it's this and making sure it's that, all of these regulations cost the producer money. Then you add at twenty-five percent, all these billions that the state's... Then you add at 25%, all these billions that the state's going to make, you add the 25% onto that cost. It would appear to me that all that does is drive it back to self-growth and back to the streets. And if I were a marijuana user, God forbid, why would I pay for regulated at a high price when I can go to the guy I've been going to for the last, how many years, and get it for a third or half that cost or grow it myself? Like I said, it's unfortunate, but that's logic to me. I totally agree with you, it should be regulated. But all that's going to do, I don't think it's going to be that successful. It would be nice to have billions in our copper, but the cost of, the cost of the increased crime, the increased arrests for drunk driving, the incarceration of those people, the extra people required to inspect. We would probably have to hire somebody, an additional person to, because the police chief of Long Beach was one of the people that got up and spoke. And first of all, there is no intoxication level established yet for driving, which is a big problem that, I don't know how soon they're going to be able to get that determined. And pardon, the cost for, for following up on all this stuff, I'm not so sure it is going to balance out. Also, within the homes, the self growers, they've had several major issues where there was an explosion in the house because you have to have moisture so they keep all of the windows closed and the curtains closed. And he went through all these things that are required to grow it, which is an invitation for mixing the chemicals, using the chemicals that you have to mix for processing. I don't understand it all, but anyway, they've had several explosions inside the homes. So we would have to have ordinances that would have safety requirements where we could go in and inspect periodically. That's going to be an additional cost. Policing it is almost impossible for us with one person for our whole city. So I agree with your arguments, but they just don't hold water to me right now.
And I understand, and I think you're right. I think both, I think it is a hard choice. I think both of them are hard choices. And I don't think one of them is the cleanest option and the other one's. I think they're both messy options, they are. And, but I think every point that you just brought up is valid. And I think the discussion of this is what ought to happen. And ultimately, if you decide no, I think it's definitely something to be discussed. And all of those issues should be probably flushed out a little bit more and to say, okay, where exactly is, you're right with regard to overtaxation and what that could do to encouraging individuals to go back to the black market. There are growing pains that are happening with this regulation that is coming from the states, absolutely. It has to be somehow remedied. Is that going to make sure that everything's going to be great in the short run? No. But again, if we go back and we talk about alcohol, it's kind of the same thing, right? At some point, it just ended, right? It was too much hassle not to go into a liquor store and buy your bourbon or your beer. You can still illegally produce it in stills, probably for a lot less and a lot less tax. But as time went by and those, those issues actually just became moot. It was just too much of a hassle. That will happen, but in the short run, you're right, there are going to be growing pains. But like I said, I'm here, I would love to talk and love to give any type of resources to assist in this discussion.
I also have.
Jake, one other thing real quick. First of all, it's kind of a moot point with us because we don't really have any land that would be available for cultivation within our city. I don't think.
Well, you gotta worry about BLM land.
Something we would have to worry about.
Eventually, but that's.
Oh, ultimately, yeah, but not right then.
Okay, I have a question for you here.
Hang on just a second, to clarify, is it Mr. Long?
Longwood, L N G W five T H.
What he's talking about will again be in front of you. If you chose to go with some sort of regulation or an indoor ban here, it is in the margins, it always can be repealed. That's the point. No one really knows what's going to happen. It's possible all of this will work. It's possible all of them work. So his points remain for you to think about in the future.
Right, that's, that was my question, I just wanted to.
Yeah, nothing foreclosed is consideration.
I'm concerned about that, by the way, Madam Attorney. The, if I read the law correctly, as soon as they issue permits, we're toast.
Correct.
Well, we'd have to have, in place, has to be in place. And we have no idea when they're going to start issuing.
We should assume sooner rather than later.
Which means, I mean, sooner be a month from now.
Yes, assuming, I think we should wait to see if the proposition passes. Everyone assumes they will, but who knows?
Yeah, but my point is if the state decides to end around this and decide issuing licenses within, you know, 30 days, are we have enough time to pass a true ordinance?
Yes.
Can we, can we do this emergency ordinance and then amend it?
No. Once you do this, you keep it until you do your permanent ordinance. You can't amend it. And this, the ordinance regarding commercial, if you chose to look at it soon, well, whenever you choose to look at it, but if you chose to look at it sooner rather than later, is a separate ordinance, and all of these are separate from your medical marijuana ordinance.
The problem I have is, say, for instance, just a hypothetical, you know, that somebody decides that they're going to grow plants out on BLM land. You know, obviously, BLM has the right to grow six plants, but, no?
No.
Okay.
No.
Well, I meant it as a joke.
It's federal land, that file is.
A number of things.
I kind of meant it as a joke, but, you know, but assuming there's limitations on what they can legally do there, but we all know that BLM is not in a position to enforce that. You know, they're not going to send anybody out there. If we don't have any provisions to ban outdoor cultivation, we have no way to go out there and enforce it.
Okay, so you need to understand the difference between commercial and personal. If someone is out there personally growing on BLM land and you have a personal ban, you can address it, not to mention all the things BLM could do. You don't, you have a commercial ban, which remains in place until the new law kicks in by operation of the permitting process. It's possible Mr. Longwood has a better idea than I of that permitting process if he's been involved in it. I have heard two dates, one is a year from now, one is this coming January. I don't, I don't know which is correct, and I sort of want to believe sooner rather than later.
I'm concerned that, you know, somebody's sitting around here with a bunch of marijuana seeds. All of a sudden, they, you know, this passes, they know they need some sort of a license. The licensing thing gets ramrodded through, you know, expedited license process occurs. So before we have time to go through the process of instituting a full ordinance related to cultivation, somebody goes, drops a few seeds out on BLM land, you know, now we're stuck with no, you know, they grandfathered themselves in.
You're confusing commercial and personal cultivation.
Yeah, but commercial.
Okay. Dropping a few seeds is not.
You don't have anything in here.
You have a ban, you have a current ban on commercial cultivation within the city.
Because of the medical.
Yes. You have a current ban on dispensaries.
So we don't have to have a separate current ban on commercial.
You eventually need to address it. The question is when is eventually? And it could be next month, it could be November 2nd, it could be a year from now. We really don't know. So I would say to address it sooner than later, particularly if you anticipate an extended community discussion on it.
Well, I anticipate somebody gaming the system, is what I figure.
I don't, I'm sure someone, I'm sure a number of people will game the system. Whether we can prevent that or not by simply adopting ordinances is an open question.
Okay, so we.
And here's where we're at. We have a current ban on commercial. And we're not terribly concerned about that at the moment because we don't really have a lot of fields out there that people could start planting.
We are not aware that you have commercial cultivation within the city. We think there was some, but it may be gone. PD will know better than we do.
Okay. And as far as our local ordinance, we cannot stop indoor cultivation in the last.
As to six plants.
If 64 passes, we cannot stop that. So what we need to do is regulate where it's grown, have the ability to inspect.
You need to decide if you want to try to regulate personal indoor use.
Yes.
Number one, as a matter of policy. Number two, then you need to decide how you regulate it if you choose to do so. Number three, then you need to decide if you want to ban personal outdoor cultivation, regulated or simply do nothing.
Can we go through these one by one?
Yes.
Okay, now the first.
Are we done with Mr. Longwood? Do you have other questions for him?
Yes, I do.
Now you know why he was wearing the jacket.
I've got one question. Some of this, I will tell you how I know, but some of this stuff stinks real bad. It smells like skunk or something. Do we have the ability to regulate because of smell pollution or something?
Yeah, and it's, yes.
So you agree that some of it stinks real bad?
That's valid. I don't believe the commercial operations are filled with this law. That's my opinion.
Well, I'm wondering about people smoking it. You know, if somebody complains next door, says, that shit smells like, excuse my language, that smells like skunk, you know, I don't like it. Whether we have the ability to tell them to knock it off?
You have the ability, if someone violates your ordinance, to enforce your ordinance. You have the ability to enforce it as a public nuisance. If you have consistent smells, which are basically impinging on public health and safety and which you could prove violate your ordinance, then you have the right to cite them or prosecute them for a public nuisance. Just like if they were burning really nasty incense or dogs or cats or something.
Okay, dealing with your first topic, can we, you know, I think that if we go through this one by one, public use, you know, if we say you stink up the neighborhood, we can tell you to stop. Somehow you got to codify that.
It's in there.
It's in this?
Yes, it's in there.
Okay. Now, what about a definition of public places? Obviously, we've got parks and things that we've probably put in there that can't be used and probably statewide, so.
It says, if you got to go back. Go back to what the law does, okay? Okay. It prohibits smoking marijuana in any public place except on the premises of a realtor or retailer or business. Where smoking tobacco is prohibited, within a thousand feet of a school, et cetera, while driving or riding in a vehicle. We can ban it in buildings which are owned by the city, which I have done in this ordinance. And you can ban it in your workplace in order to provide a drug-free workplace.
So can the folks sitting in front of Pepe's on a Friday night, you know, go to town?
Yes, no, they cannot, they're in a public place.
That's what I wanted to find out, is what does public place mean? It's public place, you know, do we need to define what our expectations on what public place means?
No, outdoors and this cultivation. I am a little reluctant to define public place because I think you know what it means. It means a place where public gathers, means a place open to the public, means somewhat the same things as, for example, the ADA. But we can, let me look and see if there's a good definition.
Well, my concern is that, you know, some, somebody's going to define a public, you know.
Well, part of that rule says we're within, what is it, 100 yards of places that schools are in, places that children.
Yeah, well, again, I'm specifically worried that, worried about that bench in front of Pepe's. I'm concerned to see that thing turning into a skunk house. I just want to make sure that we're not going to have people smoking marijuana over the.
Parks, as I can.
Well, the parks, I think we're covering it, but it's the commercial areas that scare me the most.
Are we covered with the parks?
Yeah, I think it's specifically, if I remember correctly, I'm reading the law, the law specifically covers parks, again, smoking parks around the schools. Well, that's, that's true, we're private, so.
We're children, I guess. I don't think it's that, I'm not sure.
So once again, what is our current law against smoking in public?
It has a definition of public place, but I don't remember exactly what it is. I'd have to look it up.
Well, I think we don't have, you know, that relates back to what the POA was trying to get us to do a few months ago. You know, they wanted us to ban smoking in parks. And we decided leave that up to you because you can better enforce it than us. Now we're into, you know, another realm in terms of, you know, they could not, does that, are we covered by the POA saying, for instance, smoking is banned? Or do we have to say?
No, no, you're covered by the POA saying smoking is banned.
So because the POA says?
Within the gates.
Yes, I have no idea what the, what the POA will do about this law.
Our purview is the shopping center and those homes outside the gates that we need to be consistent with whatever the POA has for inside.
I think we have signs posted now that says no smoking within 20 feet of the building. Have people stand under those signs? It's 25 feet of the doorway, if I remember correctly. For instance, Pepe's, you know, has walked that 25 feet off, so they got the smoking bench 25 feet away from the door. And I'm seriously worried about Pepe's turning into a hangout for reefer madness.
I'm worried about the parks, I have tennis courts.
Well, I think we're covered, covered there because of the POA having no smoking rules. And whether they enforce them or not, that's another thing. But can we say, can we say no, somehow say no, but no smoking in commercial areas or, you know, retail commercial areas?
Retail commercial areas are public place. That's why it says that where you have authorized the use, yeah, I think you're fine. Because like you would have to authorize the use, say, if you had dispensaries, a dispensary would be considered a retailer. People might be smoking inside that in the same way they do in tobacco stores.
But we have passed an ordinance that we cannot have any retailers, correct? That we have a.
This is a personal use ordinance. At present, you have an ordinance that bans, except as required by state law, medical marijuana. You don't have an ordinance under this law.
Don't we have an ordinance restricting any retail sales just like in the city?
Yes, of marijuana, yes. You do.
But again, I. Is there, is there case law to define public place? Is there some reason that I need to not worry about this? Because I'm worried about public place being too narrowly interpreted. And, you know, they say public means owned by the public or public means.
Public means open to the public as opposed to private. I can't give you a good definition sitting here. I can check the Pro sixty-four, which is long. I can take a look at other stuff. I understand your intent, which it currently says in any public place, it prohibits the smoking unless the jurisdiction specifically allows it. I'll go back and look and see what it says about public place.
Yeah, I would like to see that. Does everybody disagree with me? They don't want a smoking lounge in front of Pepe's?
Well, I think, I do think it's covered, but I, but I agree with you and I agree with concern. I would have to ask you, we talked about this before. It depends on where you want your resources to go. If we, if we see somebody littering is against the law, do we want you over there enforcing that law? Or are we worried that there, that Pepe's is going to be flicking those cigarette butts out there constantly? I'm not, I, please understand him, I completely understand what you're saying. And I agree with you, but I think that we do have, we do have laws in place, correct?
Well, obviously, your city attorney is going to define public place. Public place from a law enforcement perspective is where it is about. For example, drinking in public, you can't do it in certain areas. Smoking, 25 feet, it's a city ordinance. We enforce it? Now, we're gonna enforce it for the marijuana. We gotta be very careful with that. So "public place," twenty-five feet beyond... For me, "public place" is... Here, this is a public place. Right out the door of Pepe's is a public place, because anybody can go up to that door.
Twenty-five feet away from that door, is it a public place?
Yeah, because anybody can go there.
It's a parking lot, right?
Anywhere that... When I go up to that front... If I go up and genie says, "Oh, move him off my property." He says, "Well, do you own the property?" "No, well, then the public's allowed to be here." Right?
Okay, so your interpretation is forty guys are out smoking marijuana?
Forty guys are gonna be just on the wall and talk to them. Here's the thing with this, and heaven forbid Canyon Lake and your police department says case law. There's gonna be some case law that's gonna come out all over this Southern California as to how we deal with this. You guys are progressively thinking that through, which in our side, from my standpoint, just being here, because I don't want us, as a city, as your police department, being part of that lawsuit. So when we say "public place," it's simple for me. My deputy sheriff is not gonna pace twenty-five feet away from that door. That's public. Hey, you know what? You're not supposed to smoke here. We might give you a warning, take that, and I don't wanna go somewhere else where you're supposed to, because you know the law says "public place." Well, you wanna help define that, Deputy Sheriff? Yeah, we can define that by coming here, standing here, and we give it to you, and we'll define it in the court. Or you can just go and live with what is being presented by the voters if it passes. But there's so much case law that's gonna come out of it. Good point on the "public place," because let's take away Pepe's. Let's say it's just, heaven forbid, a dent in the post office. Guy pulls out a chair and starts smoking right in front of it, and it's a marijuana cigarette. That's the same thing. It's not gonna be a draw, but we have to address that. We gotta call, hey, you don't understand the law says "public place." "No, it's not. It's a private complex." "Well, you're in public." "Oh, I didn't know that." "Okay, let me educate you." But, again, I like the fact that we're all discussing the direction. I understand the commercial side. That is, like Air Force One mentioned, it has a lot of regulatory aspects, but you know, you're talking about a first amendment right that everybody's gonna wanna do in their home. How do we go in their house and say, "You don't smoke it around"? That's where we get into what you had said, Mayor. School bud, hey, Child Protective Service, Sheriff's Department goes over, what's going on? Well, Johnny brought this to... Well, then we have to... That process with CPS is worse than being in the back of a patrol car. Because they will vet that through. So those are the ways we can do it. Obviously, from the regulation side, I definitely would recommend that, you know, we have a hand-in-hand with your law enforcement here. Going with the code enforcement, if we have to look at, if you wanna do inspections, you can go with them. Hey, we're not here for marijuana. We're just here because they're gonna go out and inspect. Because we do that all the time with dispensaries that are throughout the state.
So can we restrict... I'm sorry, I'm not all here today. Can we restrict consumption around children?
No.
You can't stop people from smoking around children?
Your ordinance is about cultivation.
Well, I mean, the heck with the ordinance. I mean, is it legal just overall?
Not under the terms of the AOMAs, I understand them, no. It says, "You are restricted from smoking within a thousand feet of a school daycare center or youth center." There's no exception that I see for around children in your home. That's a personal usage.
But it does give you the option, if you wanna define illegally, in my own opinion, use that in mind, that if you want to ban smoking around children, you can do damn near anything you want with smoking cigarettes.
Well, I would say that analogy to alcohol, which is what the proponents of the ordinance use, is valid. You can use... There is an assumption that an adult would use the product as one would use alcohol or cigarettes responsibly around children and others. It's when you break that assumption that other entities get involved.
And that's what we have to provide for in our ordinance, is for the irresponsible people who don't grow it properly or expose children to it or whatever.
Well, wait, let's wait. Remember that there is a state regulatory system which is supposed to be put in place with state enforcement and funding for that enforcement? So that is, to a certain extent, I mean, ABC controls alcohol relatively well, aside from local ordinances about, you know, drug in public and things like that. Your job now is to determine what you wanna do about personal cultivation issues. Meaning, do you wanna regulate indoor cultivation? Do you wanna ban outdoor cultivation?
You said we have, just your... I want was that we had the ability, to some extent, regulating use.
No, regulating cultivation.
Well, you said, you said usage.
I said that if you wanted to provide that the plants were in a locked room away from children, you could. There is a provision in the law now that requires that over a certain amount, it's twenty-eight point five grams, of marijuana be locked up if you are keeping it on site.
You know, again, my problem, you know, when you're... I apologize, I'm not very clear today. When you're talking about alcohol, you're talking about somebody opening a bottle, you know, physically consuming it. When you're talking about marijuana in a small room, and I've been there, done that, you know, and everybody else is smoking, you get it. You know, you can't avoid the impacts of it. So those are two different, from a very real standpoint, how it's physiologically ingested. You know, you can't make a comparison with alcohol or marijuana, especially in the small room. You know, those are two different things.
Regardless of that, you... There are provisions in state law, proposed provisions, which regulate use. There is no provision that allows you to regulate personal use. When you get to commercial cultivation and use, yes.
Other than if you're regulating smoking, which I assume marijuana is smoking?
Not necessarily. It could be edible.
Okay, well, okay. Well, from a smoking standpoint, any law that we apply to smoking applies to marijuana. Is that correct?
It says that it prohibits the smoking of marijuana where tobacco smoking is prohibited, yes.
So anything that we say about smoking, you know, applies to marijuana? I just wanted to define the ground rules we're dealing with.
To the best of my knowledge, yes. Whether you can regularly personal use in backhanded kind of way by prohibiting smoking, maybe, maybe not. I do not know.
Okay, and then they gotta get on this clearly?
I mean, I know you can make the statement in an ordinance. I don't know whether, if challenged, it would be upheld.
I understand. You can clearly, there have been a precedence on this, you know, because they've made a law that says you can't smoke in your car with children in your car.
And you can't smoke marijuana in your car?
And you could probably extend that same theory into smoking tobacco in a home with children or smoking, you know, because they've already established a precedent that the proximity of smoke to children, not a good thing. And that if you ban smoking in houses with children, you know, you're just simply extending the premise of that original law.
There are laws... There are local laws in California that ban smoking in residences. They are not as restrictive as that statement. There are... Remember when we went through the whole review of the smoking regulations for the POA? Okay, so my suggestion would be this. Let's get those out again. If you wanna propose that we look at a broader smoking ban, we can look at that with the goal of being to include, to control marijuana personal use. I can't tell you whether, if challenged, it'll work. I don't know.
As a smoker, you know, I should be the last one.
And it'll be challenged.
You know, but I do think that at least we owe ourselves the possibility of looking at the option of saying in an enclosed environment, you know, there's been a legal precedent set that you can regulate smoking in an enclosed environment. And could that be extended to regulating smoking in a indoor, in a house? Hence, avoiding the problem of kids being around marijuana smoking.
I think you're gonna run up against a personal use that's authorized by state. Because essentially, you're... Whether you grow it in your house or you buy it, you're still controlling what people do in your house. There is no state law that says you have a right to smoke in your house. There's state laws which give authority to regulate at both state and local levels as to smoking. So I'm not at all clear that your law wouldn't be preempted. I just don't... I do not know. I'm sure that, and I haven't turned this as a theory that will work.
I've not been around to make, you know, to make this decision, but I just wanna make sure that we have all the options on the table and everything's understood.
I would bet my five children and my seventeen grandchildren that if we passed a law restricting smoking marijuana in the house, it would be challenged almost immediately, and we would lose the case. That would be like saying you can't spank your kids or you can't feed them unhealthy foods. I mean, it's big government telling you how to raise your children and what to do with them. And it's a path, I just don't think we... I agree with you, but unfortunately, a lot of people don't have good judgment, and we can't regulate parental good judgment, so.
Let me make a suggestion. Let's be making a suggestion. Let's go back and get a definition of "public places." Let's see if I can get some more information about the smoking ban link, because it's certainly interesting. Take some other comments that I think you've made. Let's send out a revised draft of this for you to consider on November 2nd. Give it some thought. It's on the agenda. If people wanna come talk about it, they should.
If, and you're confident that we're covered. If somebody says, "That stinks," we can do something.
Okay. If someone says, "That stinks," and nobody else agrees with that, and it's just that person, it's a private nuisance or a neighbor-to-neighbor issue at best. Okay.
I smell from this.
If however... If however, someone decided to convert their residence into a large grow house and opened all the windows, yes, I think you could deal with it under this ordinance. I will read you those provisions if you like.
Well, what about people smoking it? And it stinks, because that stuff smells like skunk when this...
I think you're gonna have a problem with that unless it is to such an extent that it is causing a public nuisance.
There are perfumes that make some people sick, but you can't...
Oh, this smells like a friggin' skunk.
I know, I bring that chairlift behind me and practically got in the eye from the people smoking their children in front of me. But they're in a public place, and there's only a certain amount that you could regulate. I mean, what, you think it stinks? Somebody that smokes pot all the time probably thinks it's pretty cool, so.
You know, if somebody had a pet skunk, if somebody had a pet skunk that was spraying all over the place, you know...
Public nuisance.
And people are gonna complain, the neighbors are gonna complain around it, and they're gonna tell them to get rid of their skunk.
So here's what it says in the cultivation area. "Shall not result in a nuisance or adversely affect health, welfare, or safety of the resident or nearby residents by creating dust, glare, heat, noise, nauseous gases, odors, smoke..."
Not that part.
"...traffic, et cetera, or be hazardous due to use or storage of materials, processes, products, or waste." So basically, still talking about cultivation. If it's smoke from use to the extent that it is causing a public nuisance, you can do something about it. When it's coming from private residents, in the same way as someone didn't take out their trash or something. But that's gonna be the exception and not the rule. That would be... I mean, that's a lot of...
Some of that stuff really stinks.
I just went to desert trips. I just can't.
That's true.
Some of these questions, which are hard, are going to begin to be answered. That's one of the reasons, I think, an interim ordinance, or at least talking about it, is a good idea. This could all work out. It could work well. The legislature could realize more tools were needed at the local level. They could also enforce it in a manner which was helpful. We have all of this to find out. It could be that with increased commercial availability, personal use is not attractive, because after all, you have to figure out how to get it from a land indispensible form, so.
Excuse me, are we past a point? I say that it's okay to have these six plants to start with.
Yes. But in fairness, you already have people who have personal cultivation for medical use. Remember that. It's done by square footage, and it's not done by number of plants.
It's okay.
Okay.
On page three, paragraph two, it says that "You can regulate personal indoor cultivation, number of plants, etc., and requirements such as smoke alarms, odor control."
And cultivation, I have the ability. People smoking it, you know, if there's a way to regulate stench when people are... We got that. Marijuana used to never smell as bad as it does now.
I understand it's more concentrated now, but I don't know.
I'm surprised you can smell it, saying you smoke, and kills your...
Well, I can smell it.
Well, maybe somebody will come up with some perfume that they can put anything in.
Get the old patchy oil.
It'll be acceptable.
So are we going to do the interim, or are we going to pass that too?
Okay, so do we have... Is everybody comfortable, you have direction on the usage issues that we can deal with right now? So you're gonna...
Usage's not really on the table. We're talking about cultivation. But yes, I'm going to look at the smoking.
Okay, so we pick that around as much as we can?
I think so.
And you're gonna try to verify that we don't need or we should have something related to control of smoking itself?
And I'm gonna look at the "public place" definition, as the police chief pointed out.
Yes, that'd be the big issue.
And I think I do think we might have him look at the ordinance and talk to him a little more.
And so, public safety, as far as having the ability to come in and inspect if we need.
Right. So I think we... And to the extent there's more information about this... I don't know that there'll be more information that comes out from cities about this. I think the league has pretty much done what they're gonna do. Look, let's keep gathering, see what other people are doing, and then on the second, we should be prepared to go forward or not. Okay? But if you have any other questions, let... Or think you want things added, let your city manager know.
As far as cultivation now, what are our open issues as far as your...
Your open issue is, do you wanna regulate personal use and if so, how? And... Personal indoor cultivation.
Personal indoor cultivation.
Personal indoor cultivation.
I think where we stood with this, please tell me if we're wrong, that we wanna somehow make sure there are locked doors when your kids are out?
That will happen.
Okay? Anybody else have anything else they want for personal indoor?
No, you understand.
And then you needed to think about outdoor personal cultivation. Whether you wanna ban it, try to regulate it. I have a sample if you're interested, or do nothing.
Okay, now, my read of this, and please, you know, I think we wanna ban outdoor cultivation. I'm sure. Does anybody else want? Yeah, personal. Personal, I would want to ban it, because I don't want kids walking into backyards and finding the biggest bud.
Oh, I did have a question, I forgot.
So we all agree on that one?
One other thing, when we're talking about cultivation within the home, are we able to limit size?
You can limit the height. Number is already limited by state law. You can limit... What this ordinance does is limit height, as to how close it gets to the ceiling and how close the lights, which would create a hazard. I mean, if you had, I mean, if you had six of the biggest plants ever, they would be limited as to height, but not as to circumference. As opposed to Versa, which limits the growing area. Most people think they're generally the same, but I guess you could have, like, a huge giant plant. Or plants.
So what did we say in here?
In here, you say, "Well done." No, it's not fifteen... It's okay. It basically says that "Total area cultivated shall not exceed, you're right, fifty square feet and not ten feet in height, and it can't come within twelve inches of the ceiling or of any cultivation lighting." In other words, if it could say, it'd be a fire hazard.
Right.
Okay. That's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, that's a general standard proposed by... Again, I wanna emphasize, it is possible that in the future, after adoption of this by you and other cities, these could be successfully challenged.
Sure.
Okay?
But right now, we're probably not gonna be the one to get sued.
We are going to work very hard into making out the one that is just case.
All right. Okay, so we've kind of got a consensus here on... Okay, so we've kind of got a consensus here on all the issues?
Understanding you'll be voting on the second.
I'm gonna be, so you're gonna put it together and we're gonna vote on it?
I'm gonna put it together and I'm gonna send it out to you as soon as I can, so you have time to look at it and ask people to come and speak on it or talk to people in the community.
Okay. Everybody comfortable with what our direction?
Yep.
Okay. I don't, I, that stuff makes me sick. Last time I, last time I did a Rebound, I remember thinking, gee, if I think that, I'm gonna die. Like, that says, I don't think this stuff can...
Cigarettes makes me sick, I'm just starting. Thank you.
Okay, uh, let's see, do we have anything else on the agenda? I gotta go back and gather. That's it? All done? It's, I guess it just says twelve, twelve...
Thank you so much.